All right, for tonight's update, I'll give you a preview of topics that we'll address tonight. And of course, has been the case for the board throughout the study session. Please don't hesitate to ask any questions. We are, this is a really nice space for us to meet in. The challenge for us up here is we can't see each other. Like, I could see you peripherally, or we could see each other peripherally sometimes if somebody wanted to note something. We can't really do that now, especially here in the middle. So if you just want to click on your mic, raise your hand, wave at me, or something like that, I'll make sure to stop and answer your questions as we can. So here are the topics we want to talk about, and if you have questions, please don't hesitate to ask. I'm going to talk about how things are progressing with transportation as the school year begins. We also have our Transportation Director, Mr. Dave Cannon, and Officer Montez here tonight. If they have any specific, if you have any specific questions regarding transportation that Bill and I can't answer, they're here as well. I'll provide a brief staffing update. We'll review in more detail some of the security and mental health topics and initiatives that we talked about last month and earlier in the summer. We'll talk about the revised and updated Health and Safety Plan, and we'll conclude with a nice impressive recognition that we received on Monday night. All right, so let's talk a little bit about transportation. Despite the, despite the driver shortage that we have and the time adjustments we made, we actually had a really great opening with fewer opening day issues than we had recorded in opening days in the past. And I just want to give a shout out and testament to Mr. Cannon's efforts for both fully utilizing our routing software, but also manually making a lot of adjustments while also personally visiting routes, stops, talking to drivers, and making adjustments as needed. It was a lot of work in some pretty trying circumstances. So we're only in the good spot that we're in now, relatively speaking, because of his efforts and the efforts out of his office. And despite the number of, you know, in the beginning of the year, there's always transportation calls and questions. But despite the number of questions that his department got, building principals got, I got, nearly all of them, literally nearly all of them, were patient, understanding as we tried to listen to their issue and get their issue resolved. But just because the school year has started doesn't mean that our driver recruitment has ended. It has not. We're hosting our own CDL course, the first of which was Monday night, right? Monday night, we have four new students in that course, and we're still offering the $1,000 signing bonus to new drivers and current staff if they refer drivers to that program. We're continuing to advertise locally, we're advertising on social media as well. So we are always looking for new drivers, okay? And although, yeah, sure, sure, go ahead.
I really hope you know how much the board appreciates what you and your staff are doing. And I really, seriously, so thank you.
And although it created some issues, a good problem to have is that our routes ended up running much more quickly than handbet anticipated through the routing software. And even as of today, nearly all the buses were back by 5:00. So the unintended consequence of that is that that does create some other issues for us in two main areas. And those two main areas are related to pickup. In particular, Route 99, we have traffic backing up on Route 99 as parents pick up their students at the middle school. And in particular, at Edinburgh Elementary, the pickup line was backing up on Angling Road and even back toward the intersection at 6N by the mill there. So let's talk about some of the things that we're doing to address those issues. We've already made some changes to internal traffic patterns on campus, but we're revisiting all of those internal traffic patterns on campus between the middle school and the high school to make sure we can get traffic out of here as efficiently and as safely as possible. And there might be some options that solve some of the issues in the way that they were solved at Edinburgh Elementary, which I'll describe here in a moment, but some of those might be options here. Officer Montez is in contact with PennDOT about school zone speed limit options out in front of the school on 99. This would make a tremendous difference for us, both in terms of safety and traffic flow, because no matter how many cars are trying to get in and out, a speed limit zone there makes it really easy when cars are going 15 miles an hour to get in and out as needed there. He's working with PennDOT on that, and we're also coordinating with Washington Township to explore some options as well for that space. Good news about Edinburgh is that it looks like that problem's been resolved this week, and that that's really thanks to the efforts of Mr. Whitford, Kathy Cleaver at the office there, and Officer Montez as well. Basically, one of the ways they resolve that issue is they just manually contacted families that were doing pickup and that could turn right on 6N and go west there. And, you know, that that really loosened things up because they used that southern part of the lot then for pickup and departure out on the 6N, which moved a sizable number of cars out of the line, and they're not even really backing up nearly as far as they were before. And they're getting cars out of there almost more quickly than they did last year, despite the increase in ridership in those two areas. So those are the main situations that we're monitoring now in terms of traffic flow and safety. But these were all really good collaborative steps that were taken in really just the first nine or 10 days of school. You know, and Dave's watching the patterns as they settle, observing places where we can be more efficient and safe at the same time. And I think even just this week, three buses got bumped. Their times got moved by 20 minutes because they've kind, we've kind of are seeing patterns as we settle into things, rotation in traffic. Okay, questions on that topic before I move on?
I don't know if we've ever explored it, but one thing I brought up, and I just never got an answer on it. Bill, I don't know if maybe you did this before, but we have Jose and Dave here now. When I was a kid, we used to walk to school across, you know, to McCain Elementary, and the kids who lived on Blue Spruce could walk to, and Lakeside could walk to Edinburgh Elementary. That stopped, like, it wasn't that long ago. Is there some way that we can have crosswalks that have, would alleviate a lot if we had some type, even just some small radius of kids that could walk? Just curious, we brought it up, but that was before COVID, I believe.
Officer Montez, I don't mean to interrupt, but one of the things we're talking about in terms of crosswalk, there are some areas that we were talking about crosswalks in relation to crossing West Road on McCain. There's a spot there for that that's already actually designated as a crosswalk, but it's not truly defined anymore. But you, do you want to speak to that? You spoke to that, you can come down and we have a mic for you so everybody can hear you.
I don't want to belay the issue, I'm just, I never heard anything about it, and it was, we did it.
Hello? Yes, perfect. So I am working on both sidewalks, there's one for McCain, there's one for Edinburgh. We're working with both townships, the one in McCain, there's actually an existing one there, just the lines need redefined. When I spoke to the supervisor, he said that there are funds that are allotted for that already to redo that, but that won't happen until the spring. And then we're looking at additional signage that would probably have to come from the district to be able to make, you know, identified both ways to make it a little bit safer. The one in 6, 6N, that's, I think that got started through an initiative through the local residents there. And I think that isn't the plans to get that addressed, and I have a meeting for that tomorrow. I'll probably be able to give you a little bit more information on that after I have that meeting.
I don't know if West Road is a state road, but I will tell you that when we developed Evergreen Farms in Fairview, it's directly across that campus from the Fairview Elementary School campus. We fought for a crosswalk there for that community, and just for what it's worth, PennDOT tried to say we should pay for the crosswalks, but it ended up being a PennDOT thing, that's a PennDOT thing. If we could get 100 less kids on the bus, you know, it would really help.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's something that we can explore as that moves along a little bit further. I'll keep you guys updated on that.
Any other questions? Now, let's talk about staffing. We do need to note that the teacher shortage in Pennsylvania is very real. But I am happy to say that we started the school year with all of our teaching positions filled. You've met all 13 of those new hires in person. We're sharing their information with the school community as well, which has been really awesome. And they have really been great and refreshing additions to the buildings in the district. There were a lot of districts in Northwestern Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania in general scrambling at the end with unfilled positions. But I really want to, you know, note that's a testament to the efforts of Dr. Carnes, Mr. Canada, and the building principals to get all of those positions filled with, not just filled, I mean, it's not just a question of checking boxes, but filled with exceptional candidates this year. Just really top-notch candidates that we couldn't be happier to have in our GM family. And it's been reassuring to show that this is really a place people want to be. And there were really a lot of people excited to come here, both new teachers and veterans as well, saw what we were offering and knew that they wanted to be a part of it. That being said, the teacher shortage is real. And we recognize that there are things that we can do to some extent, and some extent our role is limited, but part of the things that, one of the things we can do is, is be part of a solution to the pipeline problem. In terms of what can we do to convince our young people that this is really a great profession for them to go into? And that's some of the stuff we'll be talking about throughout the year in terms of the pipeline initiatives that we have and we're trying to control, what we can control on our end, be it through the Education Academy, be it through pathways and academies at the high school, all of those things starting in the middle school as well. Connections with Penn West Edinburgh for Teacher Borough, which is something we're really excited to talk about for our secondary students as well. Like we said, we're trying to control what we can control in that way. There's elements of our society that make it really unappealing to be a teacher. And I understand why people see that, see what's on social media, see what's in the news, and question why that is something that they would want to go into. But it's still the best job in the world to have, so I hope we can help our folks see that. And we had a great start to the year with our new folks, and we're really excited. You know, that that new teacher mentorship program is one of the most fun things that happen. It's really important for new teachers to have that mentorship, but those conversations with them, their conversations with their mentor teachers and the building administrators, that's some of the most rewarding stuff we do during the year. Okay, before I talk in more detail about security and mental health updates and upgrades in the district, I think it's important tonight that they exist in the context, and you can kind of see the big picture of how we are addressing the needs of the whole student. You know, if you, if you think about mental health and security, what we're going to talk about now, and Dr. Carnes in a little bit here is a little bit going to talk about teaching and learning. We're talking about student safety, student well-being, and student learning. And tonight's topics aren't the solutions to all of those things, and this isn't just, you know, the finite list of all the stuff that we're doing. But they are examples of the things needed that we do in the district to make sure kids can learn. The things we're doing to clear as much brush as possible to support their learning in the district. So let's take a look at what some of those things are. When it comes to both security and mental health, there was, there were several measures and factors that we utilized to determine our areas of need. In other words, when we determined our areas of need for security and mental health, it wasn't just us kind of sitting around talking about like, oh, you know, maybe it'd be nice if we had this. No, we use data to do that. We looked at special ed and disciplinary referrals from all of our buildings. We utilized our PACE data, which is our Pennsylvania Youth Survey data, that is really comprehensive, that all the districts take part in, and that is public information as well. And we put all that information in the context of our goals for the school year, be it district goals or building level goals. So when it comes to our state grants, we were also provided with, and I talked about this a little bit in August, a set of baseline criteria to help narrow and determine those areas of need from PCCD. And we'll talk about PCCD a few times tonight, and that's the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency that are working with all of the schools to help with their Act 55 funds that were part of Governor Wolf's state budget and those funds that came to schools. So, you know, when we talk about how we identified what we were going to do and where we were going to do it, we had some guide rails there. And we used some important measures to get us pointed in the right direction there. So as we discussed, GM qualified for the grants from Governor Wolf's budget in the Mental Health and Security equalling $129,818 in each category, okay? Those are one-time funds spread out over two years, okay? So in other words, there's two years to spend it, but you don't get the same funds twice. You get that money and you can spend it over two years. Additionally to that, Erie County Government and Executive Davis made up, made up to $75,000 available to districts for mental health supports via the Mental Health Enhanced Services Agreement, and we addressed that at the, in June, at the end of the school year last year. So what does all that mean? Let's talk, we've talked about these numbers before, we've talked about these initiatives before and these grants before, but we haven't talked specifically about what does this look like in our buildings? So let's talk specifically about what these things look like in our buildings now. Via the Erie County Grant and Executive Davis, we are able to put Beth Long, both at Edinburgh Elementary School and McCain Elementary School. Beth has a master's degree in counseling, and she can work with our SAP counselor to help improve those interventions, whether they be group interventions, individual interventions, push into classrooms. Her presence there makes achieving those goals that the SAP counselor's working toward much, much easier because she now has support to do that with. Utilizing the PCCD grant, Caitlin Bukey is a licensed social worker, and she is housed at Parker Middle School that works both for the Parker Middle School and General McLean High School. She can, she has what looked like a lot of social work responsibilities across the district in those two buildings. She supports and collaborates with the people in the grit classroom at the middle school, which I'll allude to just real quickly here. But then that'll be the point of the superintendent's remarks next week. If you look at the agenda, Mr. Buta, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Canada and I will be highlighting that grit program in the middle school for you. She'll help with partial placements, facilitating those. And she'll also help the SAP program as well to facilitate more one-on-one counseling with students. Also at the middle school, at no cost to the district, will be the grit program. Like I said, I'll tell you more about this next week, but that involves one master's level clinician and three BST staff. We used to call those TSS, those are now BST staff in the district. So those are some really nice resources that we have to identify the areas of need that we had for support across the district. And I think an important thing to remember is that this isn't all that's happening. Also at Parker Middle School, we talked about some of these things before. We created and identified, we identified needs and created a halftime counselor position that did not exist before to help support counseling students, again, be that one-on-one, small group, or individually with Mrs. Swansinger and Mrs. Mr. Simmons in the middle school. What the student support room that used to have two people in it, used to have one person in it, now has two, which is a nice addition for student support in the middle school. And we, at the middle school, as an identified area of need, now make sure that we have a school psychologist or the psychologist intern in the building every day. Okay, so that person works across the district, and those people work across the district, and then they're not our only ones, but we make sure that one of them is here in that building, okay? These are not static. In other words, these are not, we're not stuck with this now the way that it is. These can change, these can evolve to meet the needs of our students throughout this year and beyond. You know, and when we're supporting students, we're supporting teachers as well, because these are all supports that are in place that allow teachers to do what they do well, which is teach in the classroom, okay? So let's talk a little bit about safety before we move out of that group. So again, back to Act 55. As we mentioned a few slides ago, the grant monies are a result of Act 55 one-time funds. The grant application was due at the end of August. If you remember, there was a really quick turnaround. They published it late in the summer and said, we'll accept your applications for these grants. And if you've ever done a PCCD grant or any kind of grant for the state of Pennsylvania, they said, hey, just get this done in three weeks, and we'll make sure we'll get that back to you as soon as we can. We got ours submitted August 24th, and we got an update yesterday saying that they got it. Okay, so that's about the pace where that, that we're moving at right now. But we got those submitted, and here, let's talk about some of the specific areas that we're going to look at. Now, because we haven't heard back from PCCD yet, this is Plan A. And depending on what we hear back from them, we also have Plan B, Plan C, Plan D in place, depending on what the details are for that. So I think also, as we've discussed in the past, we really want to talk about these things. But the conversation is limited compared to the mental health conversation for some of the same reasons that we don't publish building floor plans for the public. We're going to talk about some of these things, this information is available to the board for review, but there are some specifics in here that for safety reasons, we do not share. But the categories are perfectly reasonable to talk about, all right? So we'll be putting alarms on all of our exterior doors that notify staff when, anytime a door has been opened during the day. That's in all of our school buildings across the district. I really, just in the conversation about this, I've heard from parents, I've heard from teachers, how good this makes them feel. Just the idea of the conversations that we've had, be it through Officer Montez, be it through the safety and security training that we do, that importance of, you know, securing our perimeter is really a priority. So door alarms on all of our exterior doors will come through the Act 55 grant. We'll purchase security software that is going to help Mr. Officer Montez and Mr. Delesky monitor threats to the district, monitor threats to the students and staff. There are halo sensors that are vape sensors for restrooms at the high school that address an important area of safety, both in terms of student health and student safety. Just because, in addition to the health risk with that, there was a correlation between discipline incidents in student safety around congregating in the restroom when this was happening, that those things were not a coincidence. And we'll also be filling our security camera gaps that we have, okay? These upgrades, as with the, the mental health upgrades, these are in addition. These are in addition to the security measures and training that, that take place annually. And Officer Montez has worked hard this summer to coordinate, in addition to these things, developmentally appropriate monthly training topics across the district in all of our buildings for our students and staff to keep us safe. And all of these things, you know, really help us, and I know he'd be proud to hear, hear me say this, keep us in the mindset of, we're always in yellow. And any kind of security analysis training you've had, you know what being in yellow means. And that, this is kind of, it's, I don't want to say it's a new conversation, it's not a new conversation, but I think it's a mindset that we're reinforcing now more than we ever have before, which is a good thing for our students, our staff, and our family too, okay? Questions about those topics, mental health, first, updates and upgrades and security? I'm so good, I got lots more. The Health and Safety Plan, as we noted in the updates that I've been sending you, this is a much leaner and meaner and trimmed-down Health and Safety Plan compared to what we saw last year. It reflects the practice that we've had in place, really in the three weeks since school has started. And, you know, these, this is not different than what you saw in the video updates, what was sent to families in the video updates, families in email, families in email with graphics. This is all of that same information, and the good thing to know is that in practice it works. And we have had very few, if any, issues. So let's go through the details of this here. I'll reference these graphics that have been shared with students, staff, and families. And they're also housed on our website, housed in Schoology in Seesaw and as well, okay? I think the context and umbrella to remember for all of this stuff is that the district is no longer contact tracing. We're out of the contact tracing business, as we say, and we only know about COVID cases when parents and families tell us. Okay, so if they don't tell us, we don't know. Any language you see regarding masking is just a recommendation. Anything regarding masking is not a mandate or a requirement, okay? Folks only need to contact us if they have a COVID positive student or a staff member. Otherwise, we only know what we know, and we've shared that email and phone number there for folks as well. This slide really, we don't need to go through all of the points in this highlight, but this is just a graphic representation of what's in the draft Health and Safety Plan that you, that you see in your folders and stuff. This tells you what to do if you are sick. This tells you what to do if you test positive for COVID, or what to do if you're exposed. And I think in all of these things, both for positive tests, or even if it's a household exposure, that these are recommendations regardless of vaccination status, okay? So that used to be part of our language before, and it's just one of the many things that has come out of the Health and Safety Plan that we're looking at now. So what I have showed you here in these presentations is just a graphic representation of what's in the draft that's in your folders for review and discussion. One of the things that we've talked about regularly, and it's really just a mind, a mindset shift for all of us that we're trying to reinforce, and we've talked to the district magistrate about what all this means and what this, you know, what this means moving forward, but, you know, as long as you're connecting with a doctor, you're fine. The bottom line is, whether you are a student or whether you are an adult, stay home if you're sick. Stay home if you're sick. We know in the long run what a difference that makes, that your recovery is quicker. It affects fewer people, and especially in a school setting. It really makes a difference in terms of how quickly students come back and how the overall attendance in a school changes when people stay home sick, which is counterintuitive. But in the end, it makes, it makes all of us healthier, so. Any questions on the Health and Safety Plan? Last thing, in case you're not tired of hearing from me. Last thing, I just want to take a moment and talk about amazing, really, an amazing recognition we received on Monday night when we were selected as a 2022 National Banner Unified School Champion. What does that mean? That's a really good question, and I'll just make this really quick. And I think it's best summarized by the award letter that we got from the President and CEO of Special Olympics PA. And this is from Matthew Aaron, the President and CEO of Special Olympics Pennsylvania. I'm honored and pleased to congratulate all of you and the students and staff at General McLean High School for being selected as a 2022 National Banner Unified Champion School by Special Olympics. This year, our international, international headquarters awarded this honor to only 110 elementary, middle, and high schools across the country. It's a prestigious distinction, which celebrates the best of the best inclusive school communities. Your meaning, your commitment to meaningful inclusion, as well as implementation of quality Special Olympics Unified Champion School programming empowers and uplifts students with and without disabilities. We should be proud as General McLean High School for being the first school in Northwestern Pennsylvania to receive this award, which is pretty cool. That was me, that wasn't in the letter. A Special Olympics National Banner Unified Champion demonstrates a commitment to inclusion by meeting 10 standards of excellence. These standards are developed by a national panel, and it demonstrates a nurturing climate that promotes collaboration, engagement, and respect for all members of the student body and staff. Mr. Aaron notes, I also understand that your previous athletic director, Rob Kenerknecht, sadly passed away last spring. He was a tremendous supporter of interscholastic unified sports at General McLean High School and across the community. Please let his family know that he played a big role in General McLean earning this honor. So congratulations once again on being a transformational leader for inclusion for all students in a unified generation. Matthew Baron, President and CEO of Special Olympics PA. There'll be a variety of things that we'll be doing, Mr. Minno and Mr. Keim will be working with Mr. Canada to celebrate this recognition with the student body. There's a variety of things that they'll do for us as well when they come and visit us with the banner too. So it's always nice to finish on something fun like that. Any questions?
Sorry, I got one question back on the Health and Safety Plan.
Yeah, let me go back.
The line on the bottom of page five, last bullet, item out, it's not the last bullet, but it's the last bullet on page five. Testing will be available in schools per the Pennsylvania Department of Health Test to Stay Program. Is it worth trying to just clarify there that there is no test to stay? I understand you're using the tests, but there's no test to stay.
No, yeah, that's a good point, we can revise that, because the tests are still coming from the state, but really, all we have is really, they're just, it's, we're really kind of functioning like an over-the-counter supplier of tests rather than requiring testing in any way. It's just kind of like, hey, if we think this family needs a test, we can provide it to them. If families want some tests, we can provide it to them, but it's not a requirement, so that's a good point. Yeah, we'll make a note and change. But it's not a requirement. So that's a good point. Yeah, we'll make a note and change that last line. So I think I think an over the counter service is kind of the best way to think of it.
And to that point, because it was a government funded program, who who do we get our tests from? Are we buying them as a district or does this government still send us our tests?
We don't purchase the tests. They're sent to us.
And now we're on to Mr. Fenda. Bill, item C, Proposals for Contracted Transportation Services. We also have property casualty insurance information. And then you want to go ahead and go right into local audit field work in September?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Mrs. Crowe? Is that right? Okay. Yes, Proposals for Contracted Transportation Services. We had a committee meeting right before this meeting and we discussed the proposals that we received at some length. We received two proposals from contractors. One was North, North, North Central Transportation, I believe. And then the other was Students Transportation of America. The bottom line that everyone has been waiting to hear about is that the proposals for contracted transportation, the cost estimates came in higher than what it costs us to operate our own transportation. And the recommendation will be that we stay with our current configuration of self operating transportation. And I don't think anyone here at these tables has any doubts that we made a good choice in our transportation manager. And we have full faith in what he's going to be able to do. We're hoping that once the word gets out to the community that we are, have no plans to contract transportation, that we may alleviate some of the fears that people may have had to come and drive for us. And that hopefully we'll get some more candidates to sign up for the classes that we have. So I for one am very grateful that this is, this exercise has turned out this way. And we will be moving forward with transportation as is.
So thank you, Bill, for all the work. I know it was a lot of work to do it. I think it's great that we've done the due diligence to make sure that we're doing it. And I think it's great to see the the efforts that have been taken to make our our transportation system efficient, that they show up in this effort. So that's that's a compliment as well for the money we're spending. The one thing I just didn't, I wanted to ask if there was a possibility, and this is not a, like an obligation, but could we kind of put, like, we're not going to reopen this for four years, or can we put out there just that, you know, we're not going to turn around in a year or two and do this again? We're going to stick with this for at least several years. Is that worth asking?
I was going to say leave it up to them.
Oh, yeah. I was waiting for Bill to pick up his mic. No, absolutely. That's a good question. And I think the phrase that you use kind of due diligence was a part of this. I don't want to say we suspected that that was going to be the case, what we found, but we, given our situation, given our financial situation, I thought we felt we had an obligation to look at this and as we explore all of our options in terms of operating with sustainability. And now that it has been explored, yeah, I don't see why not. I mean, I can think about what that can look like and what that phrasing can be. But to let folks know that this isn't revisited unless it's a request by the board, you know, any time within a certain window of time.
Yeah, I'm not looking for anything formal. I was just trying to have a discussion and say, we're not going to come back to this in a year or two. We're going to ride this until we have a reason to.
I also want to thank Bill and I believe on behalf of the entire board. That was an exercise and that was something we needed to explore. I think that was the only way that we would be doing our jobs properly. We explored all the outlets. But we had to hope this was going to be the outcome, but I sure hope you understand how much we appreciate all the work you went through because that was a good deal.
I would also like to add, okay, the committee was very happy with the decision. He didn't want to train transportation for the community, for everybody. And kudos to Mr. Cannon for all the work he did.
Anything else? You ready, Bill?
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is strictly informational. It's labeled property casualty and liability insurance. The reason this is on the agenda is the broker that we have been using for a number of years before I started with the district. The owner of the firm sadly passed away last fall. And not long after that, the company declared bankruptcy. And recently, there was another company by the name of Laszlo Schaff who purchased our broker's assets out of bankruptcy. So we are just in, just right now getting in the process of getting to know the people from the new brokerage firm. And our, our insurance has been in place. It renews each July 1st. The policies are all in place. We have the binders and so forth. So there, the the district is insured and has been insured. But we will just have a new broker that we'll be dealing with going down the road.
Hey, Bill, just because I don't understand insurance, I mean, I have insurance, but when somebody goes bankrupt like that, how are we insured?
Because the the brokerage company does not issue the policies. The brokerage company just shops the business to insurance companies. So we, we have been insured directly by the the carriers and the brokerage company.
Thank you.
Bankruptcy has nothing to do with the insurability of the district.
Hopefully I wasn't the only person that didn't know that.
Nope. Good question. And item E is another informational item. The local audit field work is underway in September. We are hoping to have the audit work complete and the report issued for the October board meeting, which is earlier than we have the past couple of years. But they completed their field work last week and we are still supplying a few schedules to them. So we're moving along at, we're on target to meet that October goal of ours. And that's all for for now.
All right. I'd like to take just a few minutes to discuss with the board the curriculum instruction and assessment initiatives for the 2022-2023 school year. This is a slide that I used earlier in the 2021-2022 school year. I've updated it with some check marks. As you might imagine, the green check marks indicate items that have been completed to some degree, although as with many things in education, they're also ongoing. And then the yellowish check marks are items that we continue to work on this year. But I'd like to update this this chart with areas of focus for the 2022-2023 school year and highlight a few specifically here tonight. The first is math curriculum. We're going to be spending some time this year taking a look at our K to eight math programming. Specifically, what we're going to look at is the alignment of those courses to make sure that we are teaching the eligible content and standards and preparing students not only for the PSSA at the end of the year, but also for their coursework in future years. And based on that analysis, we'll revise our curriculum maps accordingly. What we need to teach at each grade level hasn't changed. So likely, a lot of that process will just be updating the curriculum template. But we also need to spend some time evaluating resources for adoption to be used in grades K to eight for math beginning in the 23-24 school year, which we budgeted for. We are currently using an outdated, I would say, version of Envisions. They have a newer copyright. We're using it 2014. And with that, a lot of the online resources are dated. And I think that since that time, textbooks have done a nice job of aligning and matching the rigor that's necessary for students to be successful. So I'm confident that in that process, we're going to work with teachers to identify a resource to bring before the board to recommend for adoption so that we can begin using it next school year. In addition to math, we're also going to be working with our art teachers in grades K to 12. So that's across the district. This is an area that just was set to be addressed as part of the curriculum cycle. So we're going to spend time evaluating the curriculum and consider trends in art education to make sure that what we're doing at the elementary level and at the middle level, and then also at the high school level is innovative and appropriate and addressing the needs of the students that we have here in General McLean. Part of that process will involve a visit to Penn West and Borough to see what courses they're offering, what we could possibly offer here aligned to similar types of initiatives. But that process will be ongoing throughout the course of the year. Like math, we'll then draft curriculum maps using the General McLean Curriculum Template and purchase resources necessary to implement that art curriculum across the district. And then finally, in terms of curriculum mapping, we're going to be taking a look at high school English. Currently in the district, our students take the Keystone Assessment in literature in their junior year. It's the only subject that we take exclusively in the junior year, although of course there are some students that take biology and algebra. But by and large, that happens earlier. When students take the Keystone their junior year, they don't have an opportunity to then remediate and retake if necessary. So one of the things we want to do is work with our English teachers in the high school to analyze our curriculum, decide what type of shift would be necessary to make that happen so that students could potentially take that in 10th grade. In addition, an added benefit of moving that to 10th grade, it creates an easier process for us to possibly offer an additional AP course in the high school for those students who are interested in taking maybe both the AP English Literature class and exam and also the AP Language and Composition course and exam. So that's something that we're going to be analyzing this year, working with the high school administration and teachers in the English department to determine what would be best for our students. If you look across the Commonwealth, most districts have students take the Literature Keystone in 10th grade. That's pretty common. And then the last topic that I'm going to discuss, although this is not exhaustive, I should have mentioned that in the beginning. I just wanted to highlight a few areas of focus. But the last one is grading practices. I think it's important that we collaborate with our teachers and the administration to come up with some standards for grading that we can use across grades five to 12. A similar initiative is probably necessary at the elementary school, but that could be down the line. But included in that collaboration, some of the questions that we need to answer is, the first one is what's included in a grade? If you ask teachers, you would get different answers about what is appropriate and should be included in a grade. For some teachers, it is only content that is aligned to the standards of that course. For other teachers, it includes effort, it includes participation. So we need to come up with some standards for what should be included. We also need to have a conversation about General McLean and the utilization of a minimum grade. If you look across the county, we are one of the few districts at this point that doesn't have a floor. And this is a point of, this will rile some people up, including teachers. But the reality is that the the grading scale is not proportional. And a student can fail by getting a grade anywhere from zero to 60, a 60-point span. But the grading scale is much smaller when you get into A and B. So what that means is that a student that gets a zero on a test or project, it's very hard for that student to overcome that initial failure. So what we see in particular is if a student gets a low F first quarter in high school, we're on an intensive block, their motivation to continue working hard in the second semester with the possibility of passing that course and earning credit is diminished. So this is not an easy conversation, but it's one that absolutely needs to happen and it needs to be done with teachers. Like I said, I think Northeast and maybe GM, and I know Northwestern was looking at this last year, but every other district has some floor that they utilize. And there are creative ways to do this. Just as an example, some districts will say first quarter, you can only get a 50. There's a floor, but second quarter, you can get a zero. But that then allows them that initiative to try to come back from their struggles in the first quarter. Another question that needs answered is what percentage of an overall grade is summative assessments versus formative assessments? How do we handle retesting? We're not always consistent with that. My view is that students should be given the opportunity to retest and show their mastery of the content. That's just me. And then what is our grading scale right now in the high school? Our grading scale does not include Ds. It's just A, B, C, and then F. Do we want to consider having a passing grade that is not a C? So all questions that we need to answer, all conversations that we need to have and include teachers in that to get buy-in. But I'm confident that we can do that and bring something to the board this year. So those are some of the initiatives that we're going to be focusing on over the course of the 2022-2023 school year, among other things. But there's a lot of exciting things happening. This was like a preview to a movie. So get ready. Are there any questions about those curricular initiatives?
All right, I got a, I got a couple of quick things.
Go ahead.
So as a proud father of several students that have taken the AP Literature, it, in terms of looking at schools and how they award credit, in general, it seems to be most worthwhile just to take the AP Literature and Composition tests just because you kind of get the broadest amount of credit. You don't generally do well, do get much more by doubling up on those two AP tests. So that's the main one. But the other aspect to that is even though we haven't necessarily labeled or been very adamant about, we've had a very good English, yeah, General McLean, and my children have done, just with the existing program for both ninth and 10th grades, taking the AP tests. So I just want to again, still a credit to our English teachers, a credit to our English program. It's, it's been a very rigorous and complete program and has propelled them well, prepared them well for that exam. The last thing on the floor, on the grading floor, and I'll just be one of the first to weigh in, I guess, or whatever. But it is very hard to just accept the concept of somebody getting a percentage of credit if they did zero. If they did nothing, I don't, it'd be hard to say they get 50%, like they just completely didn't do anything on the test. So I would encourage us to build something that that maybe lets them get some of those points later because they stepped up. Like basically, they can get some of those points added back to their grade if they show initiative later. But it's not something that they just still have no matter what. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I appreciate what you said about the English department. We do have some outstanding English teachers, and I'm really confident that in this process, we're going to be able to provide great classes with students who are prepared, whether it be for the Keystone or the AP exam. You're spot on. Most colleges don't accept. I don't think most colleges accept for both English courses, right, Dr. Lane?
Right. They're mostly going to give you an AP English credit, be it Lang or Lit. You know, regardless of which one of those two that it is. And one of the advantages possibly, this is a conversation to have, you know, this is, we're getting into the weeds here. But you know, opening up that idea of Lang is appealing to kind of your non-traditional English students too because it's elements of rhetoric and argument, which is more sometimes appealing to some other students that might be STEM students, you know, naturally, or might have other areas of interest other than strict lit, you know, and the things that come along with short stories, novels, and poems and literary analysis. So that idea of opening Lang and giving folks access to that sooner might appeal to more students. But like we said, we're really in the weeds there. But we've got a great staff and I'm sure we'll come up with a good option on that. So.
It was just like a movie preview, you're right. Mrs. Mrs. Crowe, Mrs. Grabsky, and I, I guess you can chime in on this, Mrs. Crowe. I mean, we met with our new PSBA, our Pennsylvania School Board Association's representative, Lena Hannah. She replaces Jim Somerville, which many people on the, who many people have on the board met. She drove up to Northwestern Pennsylvania to visit with us. Really nice time that we spent as she talked about a lot of the initiatives that PSBA is rolling out in terms of supporting and educating boards. And it's one of the things I think that's really nice, and I don't want to speak for you, Carrie, you can chime in if you want, but she's a current board member at South Fayette in Pittsburgh. So she's speaking from lived experience, which is really nice. So she knows kind of a lot of what, you know, areas of concern are, you know, how we self identify places. places for improvement and stuff like that. But it was a really nice conversation, and we're confident she'll be a great resource for us or anybody on the board, if you have a question about anything.
No, I, I think that for all the years that I've been on the board, I had, I didn't understand what a great PSBA rep could be like. Not that, I mean, Jim was great, but I mean, he, I think he had his districts that he went through. This, she was extremely helpful to both me, but I think even more importantly to Sarah for all the programs and, you know, assistance that they can do. So she was great, lot of resources. She's already communicated with me on a couple of different things. And I expect to be bringing things to you guys or just sharing them with you for, and then we can discuss them, you know, when it's convenient at meetings, et cetera. But very, had a lot of energy, and it sounds like there is a resource that we, is really available to us, we should take advantage of it. Now we're going to move on to item number two, moving on to the agenda items. Policy and co-curricular, Dr. Lane?
Highlights from policy and co-curricular. We had the first reading of a couple of policies here. Policy 218, Student Discipline, 220, Student Expression and Distribution and Posting of Materials, and 913, Non-Organization Groups, Individuals and Their Dissemination of Information Two. The red line version of those are in your folder for you to review from Attorney Krestman's comments. He summarized those comments there. And really, what are some really current court cases that are influencing those policies? 917 and 918 are on there just for review. There's no revisions there. Those are for review for Title I Submission and Approval. We talked about the approval of a Pilot Girls Wrestling Club. Where PIAA is looking for 100 schools to pilot a club program before they explore adding girls wrestling as a sport. We've had a lot of interest in that and a great start to that process. So we talked about, this is a club fully funded by the wrestling program, and these student athletes would have to follow the PIAA requirements in terms of grade maintenance and physicals and all that stuff too, but it is a club program self-funded because it's actually not a PIAA sport yet. We talked about athletic volunteers that we can review in executive session if you wish. We shared a draft of the board email protocol that came from, you know, was inspired by conversations and requests from board members for clarity on what to do when they received emails. And the guidance on that is pretty clear. You know, the intent in that is really to avoid a violation of a Sunshine Law. Accidental meeting or deliberation that can happen in email. And what we've crafted here is really, I think, if you look around at other districts, not that different from what other districts have in terms of board email protocol and what guidance is given to board members when they receive emails from the public. And lastly, we discussed the health and safety plan, much in the same way that you saw to my presentation. Mr. Fender?
Just a feedback, so I'm not on the committee on the email protocol. So yes, we're reviewing this, is my opportunity to comment.
Sure.
For the first time. Reviewing that protocol, it, I, I would request that it be added as an attachment to a policy. I would prefer that it not be just a voted on approved thing. There's a, there's an example of that in an existing policy where there's an attachment that outlines kind of like rules of conduct or something. So I would, I would, I would like it to be officially published, not internal, if we're going to vote and adopt it. So that's a request.
I mean, so you're saying you would like it to be an actual policy that the board adopts?
There's a precedent, there's a policy that has an attachment, and it may even be that policy that we can merely add this as an attachment to. So I'm just asking.
Included as a policy.
Yeah, either as an attachment or.
Did you have a, did you have policy in mind? That'd be a good fit.
There's ones on communication, there's several.
Yeah, oh, yeah, there's lots of policies that have an attachment. I just meant, I just meant, was there one in particular?
I don't have a selection, I'm just saying, if we can put it there, that way it's published, so it's not a internal document that we have to keep track of.
So, so we would, so the board would approve it as a protocol and then also approve it as an attachment to a policy? Is that?
Whatever's correct. I just, the end result is.
I'll let Attorney Krestman speak.
Yeah, exactly.
I think it can be addressed either way. I've seen other districts who, I haven't seen any district who says this is non-public. You know, there's some districts that just posted on the website, and I don't, you know, if the board wants it as a policy, I don't think there's much of a difference from posting it on the website versus attaching it to a policy, you know, even if I haven't seen it done that way, but I think it would fit into several policies probably. We just might have to make some cross-references so that people could find it. But again, it could be also, aside from an attachment to the policy, you know, on the board communications, you know.
Yeah. I'll forward, there's a specific policy we have posted, I'm sorry, I don't have it off the top of my head, that has an attachment already that doesn't have to any more than work. Like you could literally just, it looks like you can just put it as an attachment. So that's, that's my suggestion, is just to keep it as minimal as possible, just to, the main challenge I have sometimes is that we produce documents that disappear over time, and I just want to make sure this one doesn't disappear.
I'd like to ask the question, what is the difference between protocol and policy in that if we violate, I mean, intentionally or accidentally, we, if I violate a policy, it's different than violating a protocol? Please explain the difference.
I mean, functionally, what we're dealing with here, I don't think there's much of a difference since it's more or less just trying to protect against violations, accidental meetings under the Sunshine Act, which if you violate an internal administrative protocol versus a formal board policy, either way, you violated the Sunshine Act. But it's, you know, contextually, I guess, it's somewhat different in that it's attached to a policy. I don't know from a procedural perspective when it comes to, you know, service as a board member, if that makes a difference. I'd have to look at that frankly. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I think the discussion, yeah, I think that there's, we're not going to solve it tonight. There's a couple other things we're going to, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to clean things up and narrow things down for us and for future boards. We'll get there.
And it, maybe it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't have to change. It comes out of the committee, gets approved as protocol, and then we can add it to policy at some point too. You know what I mean? We could use that as, and add it to policy later if we want to as well.
So, so that, that was my first, first thing. The second thing is, it is a, it's a, it's a protocol that is deriving from having moved our, the board member contact email accounts to a General McLean school address. It, it would not be put together the way it was if you were emailing my personal provided email address. It's predicated on it being a GM, provided email address. It says it right at the, right at the top of the document, that that's, that's part of the basis for it. Because specifically, and this is, this is my opinion, but I'm just, I'm just putting this out as a very clear statement for how we're handling this. It gives guidance to board members that they are specifically only to acknowledge communication, that we are not going to be using our emails to do a discussion with anyone, basically either outside the district or outside the administration or within the administration, that the email address for the board member is a receipt thing that we can acknowledge receiving communication. It's not a specific communication channel for the community or for the, or internal to the, to the, to the people. And this is an opinion, this is derived from, from reading the policy. But I just wanted to be careful to point out that that is a specifically trying to guide the board to only speak kind of in a group fashion. It encourages the board to only respond once the board discusses things and not to, not to speak individually through their email addresses. So that is my reading of the policy as it's put together at this point.
Can I, when you're, oh, go ahead. I just.
I would just say that, yeah, number two at the top there, the purpose of the email protocol is to ensure that it's two-pronged there. The school board adheres to the proper chain of command when receiving emails to make sure they get to the right spot. I'm paraphrasing that last part. And then the second part, that the school board preserves confidentiality of privileged district information. There's actually three, sorry, that was the second part. And to ensure that we don't violate, that, not we, that the board doesn't violate the Sunshine Act. So I think those, those three intended purposes is, is what the protocol addresses.
And, and I can say, to Luke's point, our emails have always been discoverable. So the whole time I've been on the board, I knew that if I enter into an exchange with a constituent and I take a position and something happens at any time, my emails are discoverable. The only thing now is it's GeneralMcLean.org so that it's easy to, we know what's being discussed. So it isn't that, like, I want to say personally, I'm not afraid to talk to a constituent, but I represent a board of nine people. I'm not Sherry Gould, District Representative for Northwest Pennsylvania. I'm one of nine people. So that was, I'm actually the one that asked for some sort of protocol so I could understand the best way to handle this stuff. We can still discuss it here publicly if, if something came to my attention and I took it to Matt's attention or Dave's attention or whoever the representative on the administration was, and I don't like the outcome, I can still bring it here to the table. I'm just saying, I don't want to start some sort of email conversation because I don't run the district. I'm one of nine people overseeing the district.
I, I, that, you are the one, I believe, that asked for that, but we are all in that boat because we have received in the last two years an unprecedented amount of communication. And I think it's, I mean, for writer, I understand people, they don't understand that we are one of nine. And it's really important to know that if we're engaging with anyone in, you know, an email, I'm, I'm sure that all of you have emailed all of us and think that we just aren't responding to you. It's because we can't, because my opinion is my opinion, but it doesn't, but it is one of nine, and we're not allowed, I'm not allowed to say, this is what the board thinks we should do, or this is what we're going to handle next. It doesn't work that way. It is one of nine. And so I think the point was, is that we need everyone to understand, like, we don't reply, and that's why, because we're, we can't. Yeah, a protocol is what's needed.
Each one of us can vote independently. We don't have to vote nine to zero. It's just we shouldn't be discussing a board opinion one-on-one with constituents when we are one of nine people.
I, I respect people having difference of opinions. I am, I am not, everybody can have a different opinion. As a elected representative of the community, it is my elected duty to discuss issues with constituents. And I understand that we are going to adopt a policy that says, do not do that using your GM school board account. That's fine. I'm not, I'm not, I just encourage every representative of the board, use whatever method you have, texting, email, phone call, Facebook. Talk to your community, engage with your community. That is appropriate. This protocol should not keep us from responding to our constituents.
That is everything from policy and co-curricular. Mr. Fender?
Thank you very much. Finance and District Operations Agenda. The first item is, we have a, an agreement, a proposed agreement to be considered by the board from Industrial Appraisal Company. This is to do an onsite inventory and appraisal of all of our district assets, equipment, site improvements, vehicles, et cetera. This is, the primary reason is for insurance valuation purposes, but also for accounting control purposes, calculating depreciation and so forth. So this hasn't been done. We haven't had an appraisal done for several years. There will be a one-time fee for the appraisal of $8,960. And then annual fee for the accounting depreciation updates, $865. And an annual fee to provide certified insurable values of $1,205. That appraisal, by the way, will be done in the spring sometime, most likely. They have a backlog of, of work. The last appraisal, by the way, was done in 2011, so it's been 11 years since anything's been done. Second item is to consider a resolution for the Erie County Tech School to sell about 80 of its 153 acres. This is land located on the tech school campus, and this is property that is not needed. It's vacant property without buildings. And the actual resolution is included in, in the documents with the team's meeting. Third item for consideration is an internet service agreement. This is with IU5 to provide, IU5 through Velocity Net to provide transport services and internet bandwidth for five, five years. The monthly fees before an expected E-rate discount of 70% would be $350 a month for transportation, transport services, $250 for internet bandwidth, and $29.39 as an E-rate filing fee. And that is all of the approval items in Finance and District Operations excluding personnel issues.
Just one. Never mind, go ahead.
Thanks, Mrs. Crowe. All right, taking a look at the Curriculum and Instruction Committee Agenda. Item one, two, three are all matters of personnel related to subs and hiring in one letter of resignation. Item number four is asking the, the board to approve the curriculum revision and adoption for Psychology of Body and Mind. That's a course that Mr. Weibel has taught in the high school for a number of years. It's one of two psychology courses that we offer there. That course map is really just an update of what he's been doing, but it's available in the folder that was shared with the board and the community for your review. Item number five, the committee is asking the board to approve the purchase and adoption of resources as recommended by the Administration and Social Studies Department, specifically Fabric of a Nation. It is a textbook intended to be utilized in the AP US History course. The several, two teachers in the Social Studies Department and the administration reviewed several additional textbooks before coming to the conclusion that Fabric of a Nation was best suited for what Lauren Casano, in this case, who's the teacher of the course, intends to teach in that course. It has a lot, in addition to the content of the topic, it also has a lot of skills that students will need when they take that AP exam. Item number three is a program called Language Live. Language Live is an intervention program that we're asking the board to approve that can be utilized in fifth and sixth grade. In our intervention program, we have Steph Fritz, who is administering the dibbles here in the next week or so, together with a team of teachers and administrators, will identify students in need of intervention and then target those interventions to those students and utilize Language Live as a way to, as a program to use. Items seven, eight, and nine all have to do with personnel. Any questions about those items? All right, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go through the agenda. All right, there's nothing else, I'm sorry. There's nothing else, we're going to go into an executive session. There will be, well, we're not voting tonight, obviously, and we will not be coming back, right? We're going to adjourn directly after the executive session to thank you all for coming tonight, and perhaps we'll see you next week. Thank you.